We uh. We may. Take longer on some items that we didn't plan on taking longer or shorter on others. So we just wanna. We wanna be efficient, but we just don't wanna drag on into the wee hours of the morning. Chief Jenkins, this floor is yours.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me, Council. Thank you for uh, having me here this evening. A couple of significant calls for service. You can see uh, Police Department responded over in Mountain District where a unresponsive male. Laying in a ditch. Uh, one people became conscious. Uh, it continued very violently. You know, uh, then they were transported out to the jail in charge of the public. On nine.
Chief, just interrupting since a couple of us on the council on that road. Where was that on?
Well, I'll be with them.
I didn't wanna get into it. I didn't wanna get into it.
It's very close.
Yeah.
Um, and been in arrest uh, for an individual that had a want for cocaine that we had seen back in September. We were able to take him into custody last month. Uh, we assisted uh, ACPD with a pretty serious federal information. Uh, we had a couple of D lock refusals this past month. Uh, just so the council is aware, we've responded to one shipwreck in seventy-nine hundred block of Alabama Spring Road. And I spoke with Rivera and Nelson and Buckland and Man, that's George Allen all had some much shipwreckings as well. So. Our plan is for all of us to get together and exchange some information and see if we can come up with a suspect or suspects like those cases. Hit Ron. That we had slow speed pursuit, forty-two, forty-three miles an hour. Uh, we've got a witness here in the town. Uh, alerting to a hit run here in the town. Found the vehicle up at the lumped, maybe that's him to stop and uh, it was a low speed pursuit. Uh, Alabama was able to uh, utilize stopstick and did one of the tire complated successfully pulled over to the shoulder. Took the individual in custody, an eighty-one year old man. That was uh, driving the boat suspended uh, evading the police that had run. And what he was eventually charged with. You can see our community, we have engagement events after council meeting this past month. Uh, our officer Barnett and uh, Wood participated in the uh, Kids and Cops Holiday Shop event we went. Uh, we participated in the uh, Holly Jolly Bingo event out in Scottville Elementary. And our officers have uh, started to uh, have lunch with our students up at the uh, elementary school. Our APOs donated uh, fifty hours of very time this past month. At the uh, board meeting of the academy, just wanted to let the council know that the majority vote was. Can I ask where uh, tuition for academy cost reach possible by one hundred dollars? And so we'll see about a five hundred dollar increase in that probably by um, next year. Uh, we did have one of our computers go down this past month.
Can I just hold you up one second, Chief? Um, Javier, we should capture that um, in our, in the budget sheet that we did. That extra hundred dollars per officer for academy training, right? Is that what I'm hearing? Yeah.
So a hundred dollars for paid our officers and APOs, we're allowed at the two. So we did total of five hundred dollars. So I make sure we actually got.
Yeah, just trying to capture it before we go into budget season.
Uh, we had a computer go down uh, last month. The computer was sent back to GTAC. Fortunately, it was under warranty. And they ended up, I talked to him a couple of days ago last week. And they told me that they had to replace the motherboard in the computer. Uh, my recommendation would be that uh, maybe consider uh, looking at. A spare computer. Should we have one of our end part computers go down, at least we'll have a computer that we can work on. Something that we may wanna consider uh, for future. And uh, I do have, see the uh. Call for services stats in the back there are attached. Uh, it looked like uh, the police department here in the town. We're just at about seventy-seven percent of the call for service in the town. Which is pretty good for uh, for us. Call for services are up, as you can see. But I'm hoping to be able to do it here and compare some of that. Once uh, December is behind us, so I can compare the totals like you can ask for the total for this year.
That would be helpful.
Okay, um, with that being said, I would like to uh, ask Officer Barnett to come over. And last month, council remembers that uh, back in July, Officer Barnett responded to a call for service. Uh, over here on uh, off of Poplar Springs Road where he got there on scene first. And actually performed CPR on an individual who uh, I think our fire department, many folks got there, took over. And was able to uh, save this man's life. So I know the mayor and council wanted to uh, recognize you for your uh. Service there in that call. So, so Mr. Mayor, Officer Barnett, it's a pleasure to present you with this uh, plaque. Uh, and it reads uh, in recognition of your courageous and lifesaving actions at the scene of a cardiac arrest in July, four twenty twenty-three. In town of Scottville, Virginia. You saved another human life. His dedication and courage. And this is presented to you with great thanks on behalf of all of the people you see in here and all the people of Scottville. All right, more than everybody. Uh, thank you to talk about. Uh, I'm excited to quit, but uh. Not really want to address. But recognition is very, pretty new. Uh, please go ahead and keep on that for the full. We don't hesitate. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Any questions?
Uh, question for the chief.
Um, I just made note because I had asked last time about this uh, Scottsville pool incident. I asked last time and you said we hadn't had anything and now something showed up. Is there any?
Connection?
Yeah, do you think it's a connection? No?
Pretty good idea. Who might be doing this?
Uh.
At least one of the suspects that if he had been given the info, we'll just arrest him in the past weekend. And he got both, he going Nelson, Buckland, and.
I see.
And that's someone taken. But I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, but it's shipwreckings. They're entering unlocked sheds and picking gas. Out of gas canons, pools, batteries, things like that.
Do you have any advice for the community other than lock your stuff up?
If you see someone that not right called the police, hopefully we can get there and at least identify. They're not supposed to be on the property. Call the police and let us do investigation on it. Hopefully we'll get luck in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you think this has anything to do with, I know we're, I'm like a neighborhood watch or the area and stuff and they're having a lot of heartbreak. And they've actually got someone on camera that they put up a neighborhood watch. So do you think this has anything, could be anything to do with that?
I'm not sure if it does or not. Like I said, I know we're all supposed to get together. The departments, I think the repair, our one incident with Alabama Marles. I envision that because of Rivera and Nelson, it's probably more focused what we're dealing with on South Side.
And we got it the last weekend, weekend before, Dan came through. Get five or six car. A area of two fifty watt amps and shots.
Wow.
Dropped off a bunch of people, like in one hundred room. Broken car, took what they could look.
And I, we know that folks this past summer were from Florida, for sure. And they were just coming through the area stealing what they could out of cars and writing checks.
Hmm.
These folks seem local, taking tools, what they can carry away.
I see. Okay.
All right, any other questions? The chief did inform me that he will be away for two to ten days a week.
Uh, I'll be gone for the week.
Okay, be gone for the rest of this, leaving tomorrow, be gone the rest of this week. And Officer Pasolka. It, we all remember this being our interim chief. He will be covering. So if we were not going to go uncovered. Um, council member Morse called me the other day and we chatted about a couple of things. And with the, the new uh, committee that she heads uh, up and has gotten uh, moving. The Emergency Planning Committee. Um, we, we agreed with her suggestion that. We have Chief Jenkins here every work session. Why don't we have the chief of the volunteer fire department here? Because even though. It's a separate organization, it still. Benefits us greatly and we've always wanna know what we can do to help the fire department. So you wanna introduce the, the chief?
So I'll probably get your name wrong, Tim, but this is Tim Curley. Okay, uh, Tim and I have spoken. We've spoken when I first took the, the seat. And we've spoken recently as the events have been unfolding as part of the committee. So welcome to the meeting. Thank you for your time.
So you, you know when we meet and any month that you want to attend uh, uh, the work session on the second Tuesday, uh, second Monday. And uh, pull us in on anything that we need to know and, and it's a way we can help the volunteers.
Thank you, council member. Thank you. Um, I talked with the chief and then we even I met a couple of times. She'll talk about the, a couple of things that we're working on with the mountain one side. Um, just as a, I mean, it's, I can put a little bit of stuff together just to kind of get it. Feet wet and then it puts things that you got, from the fact of from our one and all. Kinda do that uh, as a monthly report. Uh, we brought Santa downtown. We're always happy to. Be a part of that, presented a town lighting event. So don't hesitate to call when that, that event happens. For those involved with the levy work, I know that um, Tim Gore is the levy superintendent for the town. He's also our battalion chief. He takes care of that. There'll be two drills posted this year. Uh, that we have to do annually for practice. Uh, once he gets those up and passed them down so that you guys have them. So if you wanna participate or put it out to the town, people that wanna see it, participate, they can. Um, as far as the month of November, we ran thirty-two calls of service. Um, I'll break it down further if you want. Calls are actually in the town versus Alhaw, Savannah, Buckingham and Nelson. Um, this was kinda quick. But we ran one alarm, uh, eleven brush fires, which is technically lower than what it was. We had um. First lighting fires in the county uh, back when it was really dry. And um, the number is, is higher, but the incidents were so close together, sometimes it became one. Uh, but we're talking about cameras, uh, camera from our house actually caught the vehicle. Leaving or pulling up in front of their house, lighting fire and then taking off. So that was questioned and the feature within it had been questioned and the fires had. Stopped right there. So hopefully we can keep control of that. Uh, EMS calls, which is. Uh, where we assist rescue or they're not in and we, we uh, first response was six motor vehicle crashes with five. Um, a couple smoke detector installs, three stretch fires, one uh, in the county, two and surrounding counties. Two different fires and then tree downs. We have a couple of those, thirty-two calls for the month. Um, if there's any answers you guys want added to the report, let me know. I can give that. I'll give this to Javier as well. He has it and then. Uh, any questions that you have for fire, if you're free, we're open. Yes, man.
So the brush fires, the, the people that you questioned, was it that they were like burning their own garbage and it caught, they, it was just a deliberately setting?
Farce of fire, yep.
Do you have charges?
So it's a felony to, if they can convict. Uh, the hard part is being able to put them in place of the other fires. There were seven set on Esmond Road, uh, six set on Route twenty. Four on Fordham Road. Um, so yeah, we were busy there for about three days stretch. They start about two o'clock in the afternoon and then they would just get out of the road and thank goodness, this camera picked up the vehicle. When you see them pull up, there's some movement in the truck and then something dropped out of the window and they pulled off. You'd see a fire in the back. And then they did it again in a no spot and camera caught them on that location also.
I mean, so with the camera, could we bring our, you know?
Well, they're, the county fire marshals are, everything they can do. Uh, charge the player they can charge them. Uh, especially in the sub-rack.
So they've been, they've been charged.
I don't know that they have been necessarily charged at this point. I know that the fire marshals were investigating them and they had suspects in. What do you call it?
In their sights.
In their sights. Yes, sir. Yeah, that'll work. So they're, they're being watched.
Well, we, we appreciate all you and all the volunteers do over there and you just keep us posted as to what we can do to help you.
Appreciate it.
Um, chamber report is basically the chamber has been, you know, Smith the whole last. Couple of months getting ready for last Saturday's holiday happenings and it was a huge success. Um, even with the fact that uh, Santa was uh, a bit under the weather. Saturday morning, Santa got well. Another Santa got well. One of his assistants got well and uh, we, we Santa made it. So uh. We took a survey afterwards, first part of the week after that weekend and uh, the local merchants that we. Talked to said that on that day, they had a seventy-five percent increase in sales.
No, wow. Bravo.
That was uh, worth all the effort that we put into it. So um, we, James Walker will be the new president, Debbie stepping down. And uh, we will uh, try to hit the, hit the road uh, running at first of the year. We've got a meeting this Wednesday to uh. Try to get the executive board straight and then, and uh. So anyhow, that's pretty much uh, what the Chamber of Commerce is doing right now. Uh, the big, the big thing for the year is over and we'll. Get started again in January.
Mr. Mayor and Javier, I don't know, have, have we pursued those town gift cards any further?
No, since last time we talked.
Just so you know, I had found online a uh. It's called Gifty. It's a gift card that you can get as a town. And it's free for the local merchants to set up an account and get the cards. And people can come in and get gift cards from any shop and spend it anywhere in town. So if they wanna give them as gifts or whatnot, shop in Scottsville and you can design your logo. So we could have a town card that encourages people to buy local. So uh, if you could maybe bring that up if Debbie hasn't.
Uh, if you can give me any information you have on that.
Okay, I will.
Some point, uh, so we can uh, we can start looking into this. Uh, ARB, Mr. President?
Uh, I was not at the last meeting. We got two nominations for spots. We want Phil. Both people are. Really wonderful. Like, all people are applied, are pretty great. Um, we settled on these two. I think that you're gonna have a lot. The board. Okay, and other than that, I was not able to uh. First of all, figuring out. Who's gonna be president and stuff like that.
All right.
This month, but we canceled it.
Okay. We said, oh, see if we can't get those two uh, uh, potential members of ARB uh, appointed next week, maybe. Um, and get you back to full speed.
And this also applies to the planning commission vacancy. Are we all satisfied that the people that fill these positions have resigned? You know, one time to grant it will follow when someone changes their mind. One, both of them.
Well, as far as I know, that you have two vacancies to be filled. And you have no, have had no contact from the previous owners of those vacancies that they wanted.
We have not.
Okay.
Pretty certain.
So they, they turned them, submitted their resignations and you haven't heard any.
And it's similar on planning commission. There's one.
Okay.
So about submitting, submitting yours. Verbal, written, we have written, okay.
Yeah, I feel like after what happened. With Shannon, that we should have something in place for some of these where. You know, I'm resigning. Okay, you've resigned. Okay, we have a call for people to apply. Okay, no, never mind. I'm, I'm not resigning. Uh, you know.
Well, uh, to me, what should happen is if you're a member of the planning commission and you decide you wanna resign, you submit that with a copy to the council. They send word that they have been notified that you wanna resign and the council puts it on the agenda to officially. Declare them resigned.
So you have to bid, written or first, written or verbal, so that.
It should be in writing.
Written, yeah.
Any, any.
Absolutely.
Any uh, any, any thought of offering to resign your position and no matter what it is, needs to be in writing.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And we should, what we should do though is have it very clear as part of policy. We should write it up. All, all uh, resignation should be given in writing. They should be giving in writing to the. Operating body and to council. And once that's received, that is considered. Formal and done deal.
Should we need to, we'll go down that next week and have some sort of official.
I think so. As part of like an HR policy, right? Can't we?
I would welcome that. I think government services shared a draft.
Yeah.
So if I'm permitted time to take that draft to make sure it's.
Yeah.
Clear, I didn't share with the class next session.
Yeah, it's not that floating by, but there were some extra steps in there or something that I wasn't clear on. So.
I think the input we have tonight.
Yeah, let's just make it simple, right? Put it in writing, goes to council and operating body and that is considered final in terms of resignation. Anybody who wants to be reconsidered can apply through the normal process should they change their mind, right?
With the role come in when somebody says, well, I need to resign because my husband's been transferred or my wife's been transferred. And then in the interim, before council acts, they say, oh, no transfer occurred. I'd like to rescind my resignation.
Well, I mean, just by sending it. I think what we're saying is just by sending it. It doesn't have to be voted on, just by sending it. It is considered resignation.
Right, and then, but then council, to be clear, still has the option to.
That's right.
Right. If they, if they want to appear before council and say, hey, I've had a whole different change in my circumstance now and we don't have to move away.
Yeah, then they can be considered.
Considered, yeah.
But, 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 okay, but that's good. But then you still want, that situation, you know, everybody loved this person. As best planning commission member ever, you still want Javier to immediately put out notifications to the hinterlands and provide the encouragement. Apply, even though he knows and you know that it's maybe a waste of time because you'll accept, you're gonna note writing the person. And if that's the one, like, it's all.
Yeah, well.
Very complicated.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, complications happen.
That's right, that's what they do.
It's easy, just simple. I mean, the person is uh, advertised and she said they changed their mind, so.
Right.
That'd be helpful too.
All right, sounds good. Uh, Mr. Grisco, you have anything from planning commission?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's a list of things. Uh, first of all, I will mention Counselor Heisen sent an email that our chair wanted to follow up on. It was a desire to have an interest of a list of like, to understand how many rentals we have, how many houses we have. So I wanna let you know that uh, Chair is gonna actually work on that. So that was a, a good suggestion that she's following up on. We had a update as we do every session on the comprehensive plan. The most recent things are interesting in that the engagement part, there's gonna be a. Opportunity for students from Scottsville Elementary, I believe this will take place in January, and for the Boys and Girls Club. Both of them have been interested in following up and being a part of the process and being involved. And there's a lot of excitement about that. There's also a, we were visited by the, if I say this correctly, the Rivera Club. Is that correct? The right name, Javier, is it, is the Rivera?
Riviera.
Riviera Club, okay. Um. They came to the planning commission and much like their visit to the town council last time. Um, they presented their interest and. Being a recognized organization and the planning commission made a recommendation. Javier, do you have the exact wording?
Yeah, I put it into a group for today. Um, did I read it? That planning commission recommended that, he's only recommended to be include, uh, to include language in section eleven, ten. Point one B five include that clubs lodge, quote, clubs lodges civic, fraternal patriotic with five oh one C status. Um, and then strike through eleven, ten, two I, which is your special use for clubs lodges civic, fraternal patriotic. Uh, but I can go into detail now or later about discussions I had about that uh, recommendation with Jim.
Do you wanna go later, Mr. Mayor?
Well, it's uh, under carryover topics. It's right into that slot. So let's wait till we get down the list a little bit.
And, and then the other thing that was of note was the planning commission also recommended let's not be the. Person who joins the planning commission. And I will, I can talk more about that later than on here. Okay.
Yeah. Anything else?
Was there any other, uh, some other candidates?
Well, there were a couple of people that, that's what we can cover it.
Okay, we'll come out later.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Grisco? This Mars has the. Emergency planning committee.
Yeah.
A few things she'd like to report.
Well, I'd just like to start reporting out as part of the committee brief outs. Um, so added sort of to the standard agenda, but I'll be quick. We have seven projects that we're currently working on. We have uh, been engaged with the county more. Jack's been working a lot on maps and GIS information about infrastructure, um. Et cetera in town. Some of these maps are classified. Some of them are public. Um, I did wanna mention that this council has noted before about. The confusion about Jack and what his role is and what he does. I will say Jack gets a lot of uh, requests. Personal emails about requests for information, maps and things like that. So in order to prevent any kind of confusion, I'd like to ask that any kind of those requests go through Javier, if you don't mind. Or myself, if you can't get in touch for, with Javier, just so that we don't have lots of people asking Jack for information and we're not. Um, he's put in the middle of council and what he has is classified information and things like that. So I'd like to make that request from everybody. But the projects we have right now, as Tim uh, mentioned, we're. Trying to get, um, this may be low hanging fruit, these E nine one one signs posted, especially in the rural areas. Um, for emergency purposes so that homes can be identified easily for emergency responders. Um, so we're pursuing, it looks like these signs were um, purchased at one point in time. Under the old volunteer rescue squad, right? And um, somehow they were purchased. They started to hand them out and they. Once they were um, abandoned, then it didn't go any farther. So we're trying to pick that up. Um, and working with county and other officials on that. Internet outages, we're trying to set up a meeting with Brightspeed. I've asked Javier to do that on the town's behalf. And looking at potential failover for points uh, or. When those types of long-term outages happen. Uh, working on gaps in the operations plan, things for evacuating residents, et cetera. We're not looking at recreating what the county has, but rather gaps in the plan that will dovetail. Into the plan that exists for the county. Pursuing grants and funding, looking at flyers for public awareness and communication. Um, further engagement with uh, county and other officials. And looking. And looking at potential, uh, a potential alerting system to be used in case of emergencies and potentially other things. So Jack's gotten a couple quotes from some places which the group is going to evaluate and see if we have budget for in the future or can somehow. Uh, leverage, okay?
Very good.
Could I, uh, something?
Absolutely.
Jack, excuse me, my voice is a little bit. Yeah, did you send, uh, Jack?
Yeah, I'm on you, oh.
Yeah, I don't have. Uh, did you send the whole town council a copy of the emergency action plan?
Uh, for the new one that came out today?
For the one of the county adheres.
I haven't yet, I'm still reviewing it.
What you sent it to?
I sent it to the.
Okay, uh, can you send it to the whole council?
Yes.
Okay, here's the reason. Um, we we told this committee because we weren't sure exactly how Scottville could be prepared for hurts, it's been our part in that process. Uh, and our committee's been very busy, come up with some great ideas. Uh, however, this, uh, emergency plan that's, uh, have to be, um, looked at every four years, I believe. Actually, uh. Put all the bases I see, uh, necessary. Um, for people to be prepared and notified, et cetera. Uh, except for the individual has to their level of preparedness. Some people don't care, some people wait to the last moment, some people can't, but we can't address everybody, the best we can do is. Put the information out there and that they're using, which is one thing we're trying to do, but in this plan, the two things that we're learning to make was. Um. That this plan, um, was prepared by those. Uh, quote, who had a role. In the process. Um, the town of Scottsville is not mentioned anywhere. So we don't have emergency, um, go to guy in Scottsville like the county does, they got the cabinet administrators. Um, but Scottville technically doesn't have one. So it's again, I think part of our job is to plug Scottsville into every agency, federal, state, and local. And find out, you know. Where we need to be, because it looks to me, and I'm beating a dead horse, that, uh. Alamo County has spoken for Scottsville for you, and it's not just this capital, past capital, that has been a little remiss in in looking at that. Secondly, one thing that jumped out at me was when you got down to talking about the levers and stuff like that, it says that, you know, Alamo County is responsible for the maintenance and repair. I never heard that before, seems like we do that. Yeah, how do they do that, do they get money for that?
We get a, where do we get?
Seventeen thousand dollars.
Seventeen a year, seventeen something a year, levy maintenance, and then. That's pretty much it.
Yeah, it's basic, I mean, that's why I want to, Jack, to send this to everybody, and I think all about it. But, uh, this hundred forty six pages, yeah.
How many?
Hundred forty six.
Let's look at it and see where you think Scottsville would be plugged in, and then we'll talk about it.
And and can I ask you a question on that, and maybe Mr. Bowling too, is, so are you saying maybe there's more, you think the county? Would have done related to the levy specifically, or having, or not, just on that one particular point?
A lot of them had this document, that's, I know it, you know, probably required, uh, but I have to look in to even see that. Um, I was, I took part in a program about six years ago, uh, where we had a simulation, uh, where we talked about that, about train accident. And all I could see where this, you know, having created that document at the time, where everything came together. So that's why I was a little anxious for about Scottsville, spoke to their own committees, but I think we actually need to be a watch belt with the county. Because they mentioned U V A, they mentioned city of Shawsville, they mentioned Alamo County. But our police and fire and rescue aren't mentioned in there anywhere, it's like everything else, you know, um.
But but back, and then that's good, but back to that specific thing on the levees, so what you're saying is. By your understanding of the wording, it sounds like they're saying that that's what they take care of?
Well, it it could be, it depends on how you read it, not like someone terrified, but me, are they responsible for maintaining it, or is this, uh? Are they saying that they're responsible to respond to an emergency?
You think Tim should, uh, answer those?
Yeah, I I think Mr. Payne has a good point, I think what, what I hear him saying is it, this is something that's kind of been taken over and run by the county. From time day one, and there seems to be some money in it there, and, uh, we're not getting a proper, uh. Hey, this is what we think, kind of thing, but also, uh, it could well be that we're not getting the money that we're relatively likely to get if we were in the pile along with all the other clients. And you.
Well, and if that's.
Close to what they're trying to get at.
If that's been mentioned, certainly our officials should have been engaged in some way.
Well, I mean, I think it's it's kind of like Scottsville is is not really, it it's a step shop, I mean, that.
Yeah.
We heard that.
Right, and I think for a lot of areas where you're, you're overwhelmed, if you will.
So so if when you look through this too, because I'm trying to identify gaps in the plan. Um, in use cases where Scottsville might have unique requirements that are not reflected in the plan. Please let Jack or I know, and we'll make sure it gets captured, because that's where we really want to do some work in terms of. Operational planning, not the rest of it, we don't need to do the county's job or the states or feds. But I think there are some things unique to the town that would warrant some additional verbiage in there and planning for.
And pick it apart and see where where we stand, you know, or. Do we, are we being represented in this plan, I'd also like to see Chief Jenkins. Uh, and and Chief Jones, uh, look at it and see if, you know, their duties, their functions are mentioned in here.
That's right.
I would see, I guess, Scott, your word, Scottsville, Scottsville Police, Scottsville Fire, should not mention that there.
Wow.
It's all alcohol.
Stuff for a hundred.
Being mentioned, you're 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 losing one, you're two cents worth, but two, you may be losing a bunch of money.
Right.
Which otherwise is allocated to this, that, and the other meeting of the county, which the county board is more important, but you all may think it's not.
Exactly.
Should we break it down when we get it, I mean, a hundred and forty six pages, say, like, you get a section, you get a section, you know, like, everybody. Get a section to really kind of study and come back.
Also, just, I don't know, they about these forms planned, they have a committee, right, you know, they have people in charge of.
Yeah, they have a chain of command.
There's a deputy county attorney, or not county attorney, the county executive, a certain county executive that'll be in charge of. And you've got to get it into the, into the, on the table, not where it comes out and presented to the board, but when it's. When they sit around and start formulating, they're probably not ignoring you on purpose, but they're just, because you're not there, they're not. Getting your input, and for example, talking about the levy, and of course, Tim and his five carboned up on this. Um. And it was just one sentence there that made vertical to maintenance, et cetera, and I still don't understand. That which may like, they're saying, yes, we're responsible for it, but, um, for example, look at those Scottsville specific. Like Tim, he can go down to page ninety five, and there it is, and it says the levies. Uh, water shares, blah, 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 and he can say, okay, well, if Scottsville didn't hear. If this levy breaks, do they know who to contact, you, you know, what's the plan, you got to plan for everything else.
I think, did you have something, uh?
Yeah, so I had, after reading it, I found some missing information I didn't even, and who to transport, and what, to, when, where. And I also just told you that, um, after reviewing it, there's, we found our gaps that were missing. In the twenty twenty three plan, so, so I guess I found out the information.
Okay.
So, we're doing it now.
What's the thing, Jack, is there's a plan for emergency transportation, people needed in this document?
Yes.
Yeah, I saw it too, so. And you.
Okay, sounds like the.
One other thing, hoping not without other thing, um. Chief and and, um, I'll leave jacket seeing this, but I, um. Brought to our committee, we discussed it, and and it was discussed favorably that, um, we. Uh, as a committee, I'll take this, uh, job on myself, if necessarily my wants to tag along. I want you to get in touch with the owners of every establishment that serves food in Scottsville. And I also want to extend this program out to the Scottsville Elementary, even though the outside is found lemons. Yeah, when we kids and grandkids go to school there, it's a close thing, so give me about two minutes, and I won't say anything else, but. Then you point that, um, so. I brought these into, uh, our last meeting, and this is what I would like to go around and show the restaurants. And schools now, they get in touch with the school principal, not the presentation about this, but just to know, because I know that. And if the county works, you got to talk about work then, you can't put one of these in the school Scottsville, unless every school got one, probably. That's the only words, so anyway, um, you give me the proper contact, I don't want to do your thing until I have the blessing of your counsel. Basically, what we have here is a fire blanket, takes a place in some circumstances of fire extinguisher, Tim can probably tell you a lot more about it. And when you open the bag, you unfold it, and throw it, it'll be served with a grease fire. Um, no mustard, no post, no cleanup, no contamination, that about it? Yes.
They do that, yes.
Okay, can you add anything to?
Uh, the, as far as the blankets, the, anything that serves, who has to go into the F D A, and then any commercial. Type of cooking operation has to have its own. Suppression system, and that suppression system has to work and it's automatic, so it's coming on regardless of whether you throw a blanket on it or not.
Okay.
So it, it means it's a double stop, if you want to, but that system has to come on for the, um, catalog or state law.
And you call it basically the first.
Yes.
Okay, and that's the restaurant and.
Anything certain to.
Anything certain.
No, do they, it's like, like. Well, the oven's food truck up there on the corner, does he have a suppression system in that?
And I don't know how they, how they govern the food trucks yet, uh, when I was before retired in the city, they were working on how they were gonna. Work with those guys and 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 try to make them fire safe if they were, and I don't know where that ended up.
I just.
Uh, but the food trucks are definitely under a different. Clause than what the restaurants are, but restaurants, if they're, have a cook stove and they are cooking. They have to have a suppression system open, so one, it hasn't been in it, and then two, it either has, uh, a dropout or it has a spring. So it's putting stuff on it, and it's supposed to come on automatically when it detects, so.
Okay, I'll make a note about this as a student, so I wouldn't push it forward, but, uh, Alamo County's. Got a director of health and also, uh, director of safety in the school that just came on board. So, um, that's my two contacts there, so I mentioned this to him, but this is what I've really been impressed with. Um, I had a, a trip in, in the middle of the night, about a month ago, it involves playing with a lot of all this old man stuff with jubilating. They all get a lot of drool, when you're sleeping and rolling back, and.
T M I, and.
I woke up dead asleep and stood up, and I could not get my breath for five minutes, I thought I was going to. It's closing, or almost, I got shot, anyway. So this, this was, uh, it took me a while, and that's the first time I ever realized the sensation of choking, how hazardous it could be. So that got me on my way, and I've seen this advertised. And I just figured out the, and the reason I figured out this time is to tell them, I think it's important, you all will see, uh, um. And I'm a lot of. Okay, no wires, no batteries, instructions, um, any age you can do, you can use it on yourself, what this does. It clears your trick, your, your alley from obstruction, so you just, you know, you take this, you pop the mask on it. You like this? Preferably locking down, but it doesn't have to be, but then, pull up. With a function, hopefully, one or two of these, and it comes out, it's, uh. It saves fifteen hundred lives already since its invention, and there's about twelve thousand choking deaths in the country per year. I like to see, um, every restaurant, because it'll be all of mine, I would claim the town doesn't make any money and no one's getting paid. No commission.
No kickbacks.
And it's not mandatory, and I'll try to make a good presentation, and also got a gentleman for B M S, that's going to come to me. And he will explain the choking part, I'll explain the promotion part, if you all will take that.
And I I would say that for the restaurants that are members of the chamber, we'd be glad to, you know, endorse it if nothing else.
Well, if you could, um, give a time, I mean, it should stay in Brooklyn, walking around, which I'm your question, um, if. The restaurant owners or managers, well, it's really makes the decisions come to you, you need, you have a good time out?
Not normally, but, uh, we we can make some phone calls, and we'll go, we'll go visit the restaurants. And if, like I said, they they don't all belong to the chamber.
I see.
What's it called?
This is called Light Back, and it's plugged into, you can see it, um, both of these things, if you put. In anywhere for five hundred fifty dollars, I paid fifty five hours for it. And, uh, we've also got, uh, what they call a school back. Circles off, it needs cafeteria, snack area, so anyway, y'all are mine, I'm gonna run around town and talk to people about this. And, uh, you can mention this next meeting, because it may have that be nice, and we're done, you. Everyone ready, chief?
We talked about Yancy too, might be good, spends their food.
We have a grant for it, or we have.
No, it's it's up to them.
Oh, they could buy it.
It's up.
Maybe we could find out where some help.
Yeah, so there's other things like this for businesses and for residents that we're trying to put information together to get out to our local community to help promote. Safety and preparedness in general, so I'm working on flyers for that, yeah.
Any other, uh, urgency preparedness stuff?
Okay.
Oh, thank you, that was very informative. Um, Mr. Heisen, you have some things on government services?
I could go on briefly, I'll send the minutes out, we we had a meeting last week, um, and, uh. Basically, we 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 looked at the the tourism grant, it was a twenty thousand dollars, and to see if the government service had ideas about the tourism grant. And one of their ideas was to have a multimedia marketing campaign, support town events. And like the Rock Festival, et cetera, uh, newspaper advertising, video restaurants. And I met with the guy, and I don't think that would fit into the grant, so. The 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 ba- basic thing is going to be with, uh, maybe with the parks, particularly, so we're gonna look at developing a path. To access the dock, uh, for the handicapped people and, uh, have a path for dock and level grounders, so we're looking at that and other things that we might be able to use it for. I'm hoping we can use it for some signage as well, but we'll we'll see, but. We looked at the government service, looked at budget, and, uh, and it seemed that the the town's finances are on target. Um, and Scotts was gonna meet about capital improvement plans, some ideas with Javier. So the budget sounds like a sound, uh, the government service recommended that we we have a contact team up to update the map, and maybe have a presentation. To the town about the, there was an interest in, uh, uh. Changing the boundaries of the, of the, the blood plane, so we'd like to get an update on that. Uh, we looked at the website, we've been looking at that, and that might be part of the budget next year, but the the concerns were there's the search function. Town maps, how to function, and, uh, some of the list of businesses, uh, didn't complete, and Scott's gonna try to. Figure out how to maybe work with a contractor, website to see if we could, what what we can, where we can go with that. And then the last thing, which we kind of covered, we talked, we we talked and submitted, uh, the procedure for handing of resignations from the town, and we've submitted that. But along with that, as as I wrote today a little bit, the. But along with that, as as I wrote today a little bit, look at the whole process from resignation to installment of placing a. An applicant in there. So maybe to look at the the uh rather to have an applicant application. Or uh or a committee like uh like some of these. This is which is new and and we can revise that as need. Uh I think. We want to do that.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Heisen?
Yes.
Okay.
Um we talked about uh looking into uh extending the boundaries of the floodplain.
Yeah.
Is, I mean, is that something we can do? Isn't that?
So I think it was, it was part of the uh conditions originally with the uh when they really did the compartments. They had to be able to have those apartments that had to change the floodplain. And that that was one of the conditions and I don't know if they ever finished that all the way. And wanted to see what the process is, where where it is, where the floodplains are. And we never got some, you know, anything about completion of that.
There's a procedure you can go through, change the federal floodplain. Most reasonably, you may be familiar with the whole circus grounds in the city of Charlottesville. You know, by Free Bridge, there was a resounding proposal and um. After the applicant called through um. I think seeing um the perfect federal agency, this survey or whatever, change floodplain rules. Put a promise there and then that's the one you sit in California and then buying property, five million plus. So it is possible to change the designation of what's in the budget to answer the question.
So to add some clarity also, what government services was asking was about that floodplain update. So it's on my list of things to follow up with you guys about, just having that in mind.
The floodplain was done with a big paintbrush. When they created it, because it was, when they created it everywhere for the first for the first time and they set funding up. And then in fourth, the mechanism is still in the federal court. And so it's obviously quite a bit where they went correct. Or it can, or it's, and because of the big paintbrush of the big lines, when you get on the ground or other places where it's not not accurate.
I've looked at the new map they released for Budland and nothing has changed down here. As to upgrading it when they did the entire United States upgrade. I haven't seen any differences in previous maps to Scottville and then the new version of maps.
Any other questions? All right, treasure.
Yeah, so um just a heads up, next week we have to approve our September, our October financial statements. Uh first one, uh staff, and then the second one. Or the other way around, I had staff problem, technical issues and then staff issues. Um we weren't able to prove those in November and then we have our upcoming November financial statement for next Monday. Uh other than that, I spent last Friday um with. Um stocks going over a capital improvement plan that the town's been using and updating it. Uh he got input from me um and then was really, I'm very grateful that he had the time to put into it and then he also. Received into the front Greg in his police department, so we get a little bit of expertise on that. So I haven't had, uh I think you shared it with me this morning, I haven't had time to go through it in detail. But it's one of those steps to get something in there so we, so we have some grounding when you start talking about our budget next year. Uh next year for next fiscal year. Um so I I'll include, I'll try to early on next year, some government services started talking about the budget. To start getting us kind of primed and thinking about our next fiscal uh calendar. Uh beyond that, down the pipeline, we do have three appropriations. That we have not appropriated yet. If you remember from the last fiscal budget, uh it's two capital improvements and then a uh. Um an amount of a portion for uh contribution to uh local organizations. So I need to come back to you guys, but we're reaching six months. So it would be good for you guys to start thinking about where you want that allocated. Or how you want to proceed on that because at at this point I can't do anything. Uh with that, that was part of the appropriation you did for this calendar year. Uh just to remind you about July.
When is your deadline for that? When we can do that? Do we do that at the end of, when we're near the budget, end of the budget, to make sure we have a surplus?
It's a decision for council. I'm putting it up just because I don't, I don't think I heard anyone mention it to me or thought about it.
Right.
Any questions for Javier? Mayor's report is short and brief. As I said, most of the uh last two months has been uh weekly. Chamber meetings to get ready for holiday happenings. Uh after, after four years, I finally came down with COVID. The week before Thanksgiving, but it was a real mild case, thank goodness. It lasted a couple of days and I felt pretty good from then on out, but I stayed around the house for a couple of weeks so I didn't infect anybody. Uh out in the public. So I that was really working with the uh chamber for holiday happenings is the. The main thing that I have been uh doing and then, of course, the big day I was running around, Javier was running around, Cody was running around. We were all. Different points in town trying to make sure things that were were happening that at the time they shouldn't be happening. So. That is my report. Mr. Bowling, you have anything exciting for us?
Not very exciting, but I guess maybe it could be exciting depending on how you look at it. Uh I'm still working on the uh. Is it back to you permanent or is it the buyer writing you plus? Uh and uh we'll talk about that later all night. I guess what I want to talk about tonight is how days it has has. From the beginning and and more more uh frequently is kept me on my toes with the questions that we have about this, that and the other. Uh so which is pretty challenging, uh which I appreciate and I hope I've been helping a bunch out of that. Uh so that's kind of behind the scenes and you you never really see it, but that's part of, that's a large part of what I do.
Mr. Bowling, thank you, by the way. It's important that he has that input from you and we all have that input from you.
I know the boys have the right answers, but nobody answers.
At least if you make them up, it's fine.
Nobody asks me. Uh I definitely am not. You know, I appreciate it. I ask you.
Appreciate what you do for us. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Bowling about anything that's on your mind right now?
Just a quick.
I want to thank you too for the, just getting back to it's about that policy.
Mr. Bowling, wait, I'm sorry. What year did you start with the council?
I was trying to think about that. Um. Mayor Fitz was the mayor, when was that?
Oh, he was mayor when I came on in two thousand ten.
So I I'm thinking it's um on a little bit before two thousand and ten. Because I remembered you being the chairman of the B Z A.
Mm hmm, yeah.
First meeting of town council, I discovered through my uh. Are that there were about a hundred people, not a hundred, a full, a full, fifty people here and there was gonna be a B Z A here. And I was supposed to direct and you were the, you were the chairman of the B Z A.
Uh uh actually, I was Barry Long was the uh not, was it Barry Long?
You were on the board.
I was on, I was on the B Z A. I I did government services and then busy B Z A before I took a vacancy that had occurred on council.
So that was before you came on, so I think.
Yeah, so it was. I've I've seen your your name on some things from the early two thousands. Yes, like I say, seven, eight, nine somewhere back in there.
Mr. Bowling, the the reason I mentioned I I started and I think with mayor in two thousand and ten is you've been serving the town for a long time. Giving a lot of councils and mayors advice and we appreciate that and. Your ability to both see into the past and help us deal with the present and think about the future is appreciated and. As you know, there are many times ideas. Come to the council and unfortunately at times they're not legal ideas and it's helpful for you to point out. How that is and to also where it's disputable aspects of the law. You've helped the town, so I just want to say thank you.
I appreciate that, but at times too, I'm sure I've been adherent of greater weight degree to all of you. That's that's part of doing the job.
Sure.
Part part maybe also might not do the best job I can do, but uh uh that goes hand in hand.
The most, the most interesting lawyerly conversations I heard were between two thousand and ten and two thousand and sixteen when you and Mayor Grove would have similar.
Of course, he was a big time lawyer.
Okay, thank you. Uh Javier, do you have anything else as administrator to report?
Yeah, I'll run super quickly through it. So I attended that Paschek's meeting with. Uh Greg, uh which is good when on that. Um I attended my second V dot meeting uh for the Charlottesville Alamo Law Evidence. So they started following up a few things like Warner Street that I shared over email. And then um I keeping it on my radar. For example, uh I reached out to them about uh Greg shared with me Paige uh. Not Paige Street, uh. Bird and uh. And Harrison and they'll try to work on it in the spring. It's a little bit too cold to do Pandy now. Uh but that's a long and short way of saying that uh. I have all those items that we want to work on and I'll keep it on my radar, have it on my dry erase board in office even. Uh beyond that, before I even got into the meeting, they talked to me about Route Twenty uh before I even asked. So they were fully aware of how traffic issues they were, so they were working on their contractors to change timing and then extend those. Uh caution signs. So we have a year of it, but at least they were, they were pretty aware of how uh. How inconvenient that was that first week.
Took me two red lights to get through the intersection this morning.
They sent the red light down to Carter Bridge. Yeah, I was there.
Ducking those two lights. A year for that?
Yeah, it's uh due to, due to be finished in December fifth of twenty twenty four.
Oh my gosh, this is just crazy.
I know, but why there was no traffic and I just sat there with with.
I don't know. You remember when they did the one on Route Six and the one up at Bay of Paul Fabulous and uh anyhow.
Mr. Bowling, there's a lawyer setting. So whenever a lawyer comes, it's.
All right, uh any, any other questions for Javier at this point? We're gonna, I'll let both chiefs know that uh you know, you're welcome to stay as long as you want to, but I know you both have other important things to do. And so we'll see you. You have a good, safe trip to Michigan and we'll see y'all and have a happy holiday. Thank you so much.
And Scottville, therefore, although it is a good example of what we can talk about when they are committed. If you don't ask for it, you don't get it. You're not there and nobody there for it. So uh that's a very good example of getting involved.
If you're right about that, like being at the table is important.
All right, uh Mr. Town Administrator, tell us about maintenance update.
So I think this is a leftover from a few weeks ago, a bill that was having me there. I just want to remind everyone that we have the deadline for. We had an agreement through the end of the year to do an evaluation and then I have it on my agenda uh for. Early in next year, in January, to have a discussion with you guys. Uh I'm following up on the direction you guys have provided. But I just wanted to make that clear.
Just because we haven't heard anything doesn't mean something's not going on. Is that the net here?
Yeah, that's less output or more um currently I'm saying it, so.
So I'm hobby and Eric, Javier and I had a, had a conversation this afternoon and. Last month's council meeting was when we were supposed to have a. A closed session to talk about that probationary period in his contract and then we didn't have enough people to have a council meeting. So we couldn't have a closed session and we couldn't do anything on that. We need to have a closed session to talk about our maintenance department, but we decided that would be after the first of the year. So Javier is willing, and if it's okay, I'll ask Mr. Bowling if we have a closed session to discuss personnel matters. And discuss both of these things at the same time, so we won't have to advertise it twice and we can get it all out of the way in one meeting.
What's the second thing you're discussing?
Uh the maintenance department had been put on notice that uh some people weren't happy with the performance of the maintenance. So uh if we, if that's okay with y'all, we'll schedule for the, for the January council meeting. We'll have a closed session and take care of the, that probationary thing. And the maintenance department, any, you know, whether we make any changes in the probation, in the uh maintenance department or not.
Okay. I want to uh bring up an issue about maintenance, which is beyond the maintenance man, I think, and it's been a. I've worked with Javier a little bit, trying to come up with ideas, but I think we could probably use everybody's help and ideas about this. Um last year, I don't know, several or a couple of years ago, maybe it was COVID, I think it might have been, they. They ordered about twenty or twenty-five picnic tables. And they've been cluttered there for, in for a while at the uh Commerce Market and. Um you know, I I I I shared with them where I thought they should go, you know, maybe four or five there, maybe a couple of. Canal Basin Square, a couple more at the uh Van Cleve and the rest could be stored at Van Cleve, but the the issue is that. Unless he takes one at a time, we need to figure out a plan where we, and he'd need some help because that's probably can't load a picnic table on a truck by the, by himself. So maybe, I don't know if we could have a, I mean, a picnic table moving day or or something like that, but it's it. I don't think they should be on that hillside for the whole year. They're not thoughtfully placed and and I gave them where I thought and put, put a map out where I thought they should go and other people could weigh in too, but. I think four or five down there, two at the Canal Basin Square and and a couple. I I met a a neighbor down at Van Cleve and she said, there used to be a picnic table right across. From where I live, right there, Miss David. And uh I said, well, they took it and we only use them once a year, I guess. So. Anyway, I I think we need to come up with a plan. That for how to do that uh logistically and so we don't have to do it now, but I I just think it'd be good to figure out if we got some able-bodied people and and some trucks will. Maybe if he wants to do one at a time, I'll help him load one on and take it off.
They are really, they are really heavy.
Yeah, it'd be better with a trailer rather than trucks because lifting them up that high into a truck bed is difficult.
It's um black trailer.
Oh.
Put a twenty-one foot Lincoln on it, probably from California. Just gotta get the car out of the trailer and then just let me know when you want to do it. We'll get probably put.
That'd be great. That'd be way to do it.
There might be any room sort of behind the fire station somewhere we could store them over there.
I don't know.
How about Eddie? Do you know, it'd look better than the junk cars.
Well, it's a, it's a slope right behind the buildings.
I don't know.
And I know after that slope, um they got trailers there, they store back there, and I mean, just like this. They can go now.
A couple, even even all, just a couple of them.
I mean, maybe we donate a couple too.
What did we get all of these for?
Uh I think they got them for, I think it wasn't approved by staff, but but I think they, they had the COVID money and I think. Uh the former town history just feel like, let's get them rather than rent them. And.
They can take that.
It was, well, they, you know, it wasn't really thought out.
We got the last calendar year and for example, Fourth of July. We borrowed Cody's trailer and it took us most of the day between Greg and me and I, so.
To move them?
Yeah, it is. And Greg really let us know.
You know, I think we used to.
It's a lot of effort.
So.
You know, one of, one of the things I will say, just whenever we, you, and I think it's right to put more in Van Cleve. Several times when we've had the picnic table and then we could ends up at the lake.
I know.
I've taken it out of the lake before. It's a. One of the frustrating things I had when I was more active there was.
Well, if we put any back over there, we, I I worked at a place in in Richmond that had nice teak benches. We had to chain them.
That's right. That's right.
Ground. We put, we.
Yeah.
Put a rod about eight feet down.
Yeah.
In the ground and.
I'm not saying you do it the first time.
Yeah, we gotta do something with them.
Yeah, they look terrible.
Well, there's two down there already, too close to them. They only need one there.
Yeah, so any other maintenance updates? Everybody keep their eye open for a place where we can store some tables.
And we could figure out, nobody must have, you know, if they want to do that, we could figure out.
So I put my, my trailer in the room right now with my Lincoln on it, so.
Does your husband want to help?
He's not gonna be able to, he's got heart issues, but he can drive the truck.
Oh, you would drive it home?
He can drive.
Okay.
If you saw there, let us score some down at the plant somewhere. And they'd be behind a locked fence. I've got the code to the.
We can do that, that'd be great. That's the closest town. It'd be easier to transfer that.
So maybe that's something we can, let's talk to uh. Mr. Armstrong is his name. I thought that guy looked familiar. Yeah, um. Yeah, maybe maybe, you know, an area down there where we can store some picnic tables. It wouldn't be in the way. Something to think about.
Can you check into that?
But don't we own the wetland, like the wetlands in between? You can't put them on blocks in the wetlands?
Okay, well, something we can be thinking about working on after the holidays. We'll do something about it. All right, um we're gonna continue talking about this zoning text amendment thing.
Mister Mayor, do you mind if I follow up on what the planning commission said?
Uh yeah, you can go first and then well, let's let's go and do all night on this thing. Because uh we still have to have a public hearing and then we can have a public hearing and a vote on it on the same night. We don't have to spread that out over two months. But uh just offer your thoughts, whichever way you're leaning on this thing and just so everybody kind of know where we stand. And now we'll just start with Mister Chris goes.
Uh just, I'm just following up. The the planning commission heard a presentation, the same presentation, basically the town council got by. The club and also their attorney. In conversation, the planning commission thought it made sense to make this recommendation that you see here. And that recommendation was to do it without a special use permit. And there was the addition of using the term. But what is it? The five oh one C three status and striking eleven ten dot two I. And the idea was. I think everybody's been supportive of it. It's just a matter of which way we go, but so the planning commission went to level of making the recommendation. Favoring the non-special use route using this language.
So so that five oh one status would at least guarantee that they're a legitimate committee. They've been vetted through some kind of process, right? And that, no, really?
Five oh one C three has not the due clause.
It's nonprofit.
Including that kind of language and code. Fundamental problem. First, it's in the commercial history and uh the fundamental basic definition of commercial history. But two, um you have the dilemma about the uh going into the turnover code and having that as. Your your basis for some sort of caution for whatever you're approving. Uh it's it's not overly difficult to get a five oh one C three status for corporations. I've done it before. Our big problem is problem with that is now it takes around a year plus to get that official designation. So anybody who's doing that is filling out a monster application for. It's so long because it covers everything in kitchen setting for every known little entity that claims to be nonprofit. And then you need to be building all blanks correctly and send it in about a year later, you get a five oh one C three designation. Halfway appropriate for category. That's that's basically. Uh I wouldn't that the planning commission said, why they thought that was something else. Made a difference between the buy right. Especially permit compared to all the. For-profit entities that you have downtown, uh maybe a club or whatever, you know, like bars and.
Right, restaurants.
Whatever for traffic. And and then they get it further and this gets into the following, but I'll say it is a. There's the traffic reasons you can have uh an active five oh one C seven return lodge. That has more traffic every night requiring install for weddings than a than a social club that's for profit. Who uh exists for the benefit really of its members. I don't think, I can't remember whether these people are applying for for profit or not for profit. But I think that greatly complicates.
Mister Mister Bulling, just to clarify, um to my understanding, they're they're not for profit. But what you're saying is you think this after it was, so it says we're after consultation with the town attorney. Your recommendation is cleaner, so to speak, than what you felt like the planning commission did.
Yes, it's simple. And it's and it serves it serves purpose that is divine duty. Big problem, I mean, assuming that the talent is one of its function is to have a lot of commercial business, which I know they do. One of encourage as much business activity as you can get down here and. Um it's keeping your categories as simple as you can to encourage that activity, seems to make sense.
Okay.
And I think maybe the safe thing to say to follow up what you said, Mister Mayor, would be. It it the the planning commission was simply trying to do the by right. Version that they thought made the most sense and. You're saying that they made it a little more complicated by adding that piece to it.
Right, and again, this assumes that there was some sort of rationale behind the. The town of Scottsville, you can say with choosing a totally contradictory to a zoning schedule, which was just an accident. And as I've said before, when they adopted this thing, they gave it little or very little thought and they just adopted it. How far county though the ordinance that was in effect in the nineteen nineties on the dot of the current year. And at the time they did so, they had consistent clause in operation, the Sonic Lodge.
And there was a conversation also about the the current charge of the fifteen hundred dollars that would go. If it's special use, same conversation I think we had with town council, we had with. Mister Mayor, the follow up on what you said, for my part, I I have favored simpler. And simpler to me seems by right.
Yeah, I agree.
But at the same time. If we do by rights, we would want to do by right recognizing. What that means in terms of now and in the future.
Let's see, uh I I I have no problem with a club. But the problem I have is that. And I guess this is because of. Somewhat representing the Chamber of Commerce and this is a commercial building. There was a commercial building forever. Even though it had the Sonic Lodge upstairs, bottom half was commercial. And you go back to a couple of years ago when someone wanted to turn their vacant apartment into an Airbnb and everybody was in an uproar. No, we don't have enough apartments, so why should we turn it in, let him turn it into an Airbnb? Well, we don't have enough empty commercial spaces. We have more than we need. That is a very good commercial space for a very good business with large windows and the parking in the back and all. And I just think it eliminates another possible business coming to town.
That'll get you in some legal trouble. Wish you wouldn't say that.
What's that?
I mean, that'll get you in some legal trouble because you're 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 using as, I mean, it's a legitimate reason. But again, you have to realize that what you're doing is making a zoning termination here. And you have an application.
So it's own commercials, so why can't you say if it's own commercial, it needs a special use permit?
Well, because the 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 way the ordinance is written is it's own commercial and you could, you don't have to, you could do a commercial, you could do it by right too.
Yeah. So we need to nail it down one way or the other, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so what's wrong with nailing it down on the special?
Because you want to put conditions on it, but uh um. You can't really do it because of the basis you're saying. That doesn't change your rationale about what I'm saying. Yours is ours to have more commercial activity in the downtown business area, right? And certainly if you look at clubs in Charlesville, there are commercial clubs, there are commercial activities. That's the problem.
But if you have a special use permit, you can do things like set the hours of operation. They can't go all night long.
If you want to be more restrictive on the activity.
They can't have, uh of course, ABC would monitor alcohol consumption, but you can't have people wandering around the parking lot. At the public parking lot out back with open containers. That's illegal.
Well, and that's that's illegal. Well, again, it's it's council can decide what you want to do.
Well, like I say, I I don't have any problem with a private club, but I just think. When you have a special use permit, it gives the governing body the opportunity to. Address any concerns that the public has. And make some rules that are beneficial to the public in general. Okay, that's that's. And when you say by rights, you could have a.
Could have anything.
You have it.
Go in, right?
You look at your by right uses and you look at your special use permit uses. You'll you'll see that some, that most of special use permit uses are more intensive use than by right. And there's two anomalies that might have been taken, not as the clothes, Sonic Lodge and Colton Lee, having the shift in Sonic Lodge. And the other uh inconsistency is to buy rights that in these permanent conflict and this for um.
For chat uh section one.
Section eleven, which are uh parphagies, RSP five, whatever.
Yeah.
Which are traditionally by right uses in in uh commercial liberties from requires special use permits. And then here's this which set a more evidence.
The one, the one thing that was also said, Mister Mayor, just to follow up on something you said. I've never favored a limitation on Airbnbs. I don't favor that. I think we. Are in a dangerous territory when we tell various residences they can or can't do it. I only mentioned it because you used it as a point and the same thing as a business. If a building is used for a different purpose than I want it to be used. I don't really care what my opinion is, but I what I, it's important that in terms of, I think, structure. The simplest way to solve a problem is usually better, so to speak. That's why I say from a by right perspective. We could uh have more control over it. I'd rather have less control over it philosophically. In other words, I want to make opportunities for businesses or organizations to be freer to do things and have less structure on them. I think we often hear from the town too, people complain quite frequently that would make things difficult to happen in the town. And we would like to make things simpler. I know the intent of this is we recognize there's a conflict. And where the current policy, it tells us to opt for the stricter interpretation. I'm simply advocating.
The current policy only requires, is that what the administrator uh would strictly.
Right, but but that's what that's what ends up happening. And so I'm I'm simply saying is. It, since we could go the other way and the building, it's a legitimate use of the building, I would say let them do it.
This is just a flat out mistake.
Right.
Sure.
And you know what it is and then you need to correct it one way or the other. Either way, it's fine.
It, well, the next step, it's, I mean, it seems as though we have different opinions in the council, which maybe that's your answer, Mister Mayor. We have differing ideas, but the next step is at some point to have a public hearing.
Have a public hearing, somebody made a motion, somebody made a second, then voted.
We have to do that next week.
Is that when they already scheduled for?
No, we have to schedule.
We have to schedule, so let's, why don't we do that next week, have a public hearing, get this thing over?
You can't do a public hearing for zoning unless you properly advertise it. You don't do the applicant service. Or or yourselves any service by doing a public hearing for zoning matter that you can properly advertise.
And and to clarify. Just to clarify, I think, and tell me if I'm wrong on anybody here, um. Some of us want to approve it by right and some of us want to approve it by especially used. I think that's correct. Is there anybody who doesn't want to approve it at all? That's my, I guess, my question. I think it's.
Again, you know, I have I have real.
No, that's great.
You you can't, you should, you really have to be careful. This one, this one not so much, but you but you get it. Maybe this one, yeah, it's a zoning matter and you really don't want to tell tell it. Telescope how everybody's gonna vote before you have the public hearing.
Sure, yeah, we can't.
Lots of court cases that end up that the council telegram telegram what it wants to do. And they really are opposed to or in favor of civic action and then because they're cow scoped. I think that's the right word. They um and after the hearing, somebody who doesn't like the challenges and send it to court. Or is it out because it's simply violated the uh.
Point well, point well taken, Mister Bulling. I have more trying to say to the. Uh in terms of, you know, we've been asked multiple times, at least. Having been at the planning commission, having been at the town council by the organization. I mean, on a personal level, I'm supportive one way or the other. I'm just trying to figure out as as a.
Yeah, it's like you just have, I mean, you just make it, somebody makes a motion, somebody makes a second and you count the heads. And if you have a majority and form votes for it, then then it passes it. If it's done, then somebody else makes an offer.
Sure.
Isn't there a way we can get this scheduled sooner so that this thing can get resolved?
I had it on agenda last month, but the quickest we can know as Matt Ron. Jimma noted is next week you can call, you can make a motion to pull a public hearing. I need time to properly notice and you can have a public hearing in January and then.
That's fine.
Take any action.
We could advertise the recodification ordinance at that time too.
And I have it on for agenda next week also, the recodification.
Okay, so if we do this, are there any other recodifications that we need to address or attend to address at that same time?
Yes.
Because let's clean these all up off the books without spending additional time and money.
So I had, I'm sorry. Uh stepping on each other, um I've had enough time to look over, as you said, the rest of the spot. And if you looked at the last uh brief I provided and this current brief. I want to see if I can get some input from council, if they would be interested in cleaning that up also.
Input from council is that if you're interested in cleaning it up, then somebody makes a motion to advertise. Either that you call a court, you approve it or you or you say it should be by law. And you can advertise that along with other matters.
Three birds of one sound.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts or comments on this topic?
Makes my head hurt.
All right. So what is item uh for a land use discussion?
So last, so this is. Potentially, at least at a council level, maybe one of the last meetings on this. We talked um two months ago about budget and potential shortfalls that could hit us. Uh if we were unprepared for those. Last time we talked about. Revenue generation and revenue in terms of. Uh. Tax-based revenue and non-tax-based revenue, right? Things that we could consider. So I wanted to have a a discussion on um. Land use as it relates to opportunities and taxation and things like that. So the town owns, what, eleven properties, Javier? Javier has the map of the eleven properties that we own. I don't think we're using them as efficiently or as effectively as we can. I had a presentation on that last time about better effective use of our properties. For example, the farmer's market, that's, you know, what are we doing in the off hours? Can we make, uh can we turn those cost centers into revenue centers, right? We have the thirty-some-odd acres out in Buckingham. Can we do something with those thirty-some-odd acres?
Sell it.
Sell it, timber it, create something on it. Um get a grant to do something with it would be a great opportunity that it's just sitting there, right? Um so in terms of public land, you know, there's scan space. People have mentioned more effective use of downstairs potentially. I think there are offices down there too, right? In terms of not just the theater, but aren't there offices in the back?
Oh, there's.
Really often.
There are two rooms in the back and a storage, two storage closets and then kind of like a common area right there.
The scan have all all of it or just just that one?
Scan, scan and rinse downstairs.
That fall downstairs.
We did the offices, we'd have to work with them or through them and get the money.
I don't, we couldn't really use it for office space, but when there's theater product like. That has to be available.
No.
That has to be available for the production that happened down there. And if it was filled with office spaces and that if you have a cast of thirty people and three are on stage. That's where they are. That's where dressing rooms are. That's where all the.
And that's during workdays too. Monday through Friday.
What I'm saying is if somebody has that, if that was my office, I could be like. I don't want you.
They rent the downstairs. It's like you rent a house.
Yeah, but we can change those terms, right?
Yeah, can we?
Because, you know, my husband used to rent over the gallery, a small little office. He didn't leave stuff there. He came in with his briefcase. Worked Monday through Friday, you know, eight to four, and then came home. And then the office after four o'clock was empty. Alls I'm saying is we should look at other opportunities, not just. You know, I'm not talking about putting someone permanently in the opposite, but I think there are ways that you might leverage the spaces that we have for more revenue. Okay, so I think we should think about those opportunities for our spaces. Whether that's downstairs, whether that's the thirty five acres. So that's that's the public land. The other thing is, we talked about public private discussions. There are, and I mentioned, there were two opportunities that we have. One is potentially the rest of the uh land behind the Tiger Fuel. In a discussion I had with Gordon Sutton, he has mentioned that they might want to do something with that. We've talked about having additional rental properties in town that might be affordable. There are concepts like. And I brought this, it's a concept drawing up the internet. Mayor, if you would take one and pass it around, please. These concepts called pocket neighborhoods. Pocket neighborhoods are typically ten to twelve units on an acre or less. So very small homes. Um they're done very tastefully with green space in between them. They've been um. They've been implemented on the West Coast. They seem to be very popular catching on. So this is an opportunity to have a discussion with a uh a private. Um entity about what they might do for that space that could benefit the town. Things like pocket neighborhoods promote concepts that we've heard about in strategic planning in terms of walkability. You have very close neighbors, sociability and community connections. The availability of space for people to potentially age out of their big houses. And have a place to either buy or rent in um in a smaller context. But yet still maintain their presence in the community.
This is that behind the target field where the holy pond is?
I think there's three acres back there.
Where the holy pond is around there?
Yeah.
It's kind of a big hill and now she's okay.
But if you've got an acre, you can put twelve homes or rental units in. And this is an opportunity for us to have a conversation about that. The other conversation that we could have, and I mentioned, was East Village. Matt left a drawing of East Village, his concept before he left. Here it is, this is kept in the office. And what he proposed. Or drew up in a concept was higher density. So this was his map. He had duplexes and quads. You'll see most of the building was in the front of the property. There was some mention of additional trail space or public space added into Van Cleve. There were parks mentioned, ponds mentioned, and some. Uh aspect of having single family homes at the back. And where is up at East Village?
First street.
Up at Blenheim. Not birds.
Oh, ask Mr. Armstrong.
Right, well, and I was just going to say, I have heard conversations that. The developers don't want to come to the table to have a conversation. I've asked Charlie here to ask you personally, are you willing to have a conversation about this property? And can the council somehow get involved in those discussions? Can we have community discussions? To talk about maybe alternatives for this space. Now, in terms of. Uh strategic goals, we can talk about how do we make it walkable? How do we make enhanced community connections? We talked last time about delight factors. How can we manage that density? Um Charlie, do you have any comments about this kind of approach in general?
I haven't seen that um far to know, but but yeah, we're always interested in in talking about anything. Um and we've done some smaller. Then you call public neighborhoods that you're talking about in other places. Um. We have to look at the front and center of this table because I know you always want to try to use generally mostly just some of the chat on this and then try to respond to that. Um but that is that that kind of public neighborhood is acceptable, or maybe it's more affordable than used last night.
Right.
Still getting a reasonable number of homes.
So I want to bring out to council that there are opportunities for us to have discussion. That would provide additional housing in our community that could be done very well. We've heard from a developer in this case that they are willing to come to the table and have that discussion. And that we could help drive this discussion. So how do we best do that? I have other drawings from other things that we can have. Are you open to having the dialogue?
Yes, so this is no, we're no longer talking about land we own. No, we just shifted really quick. That's why I was confused when I was saying, where is this land?
A public private.
I thought we were still talking about that.
No, so there are opportunities with land that we own in the public space. And then there are public private opportunities beyond the public space. Yeah.
I missed the shift.
Sorry, my apologies.
No, that's okay. I apologize when I was.
Yeah, looking at a different concept. We know that there are what? Charlie, how many homes are in there? Forty six? Oh, and it's the it's East Village, right? Forty two up at Blenheim?
All building.
Seventy three, okay. So we have an opportunity to have a discussion about potential higher density up there.
Yeah, that's spread out over the entire.
There are very nice um duplexes that are behind uh the Dollar General in Fluvana. That seemed to be doing very well. Um this concept of having higher density isn't. Unheard of in other historic communities. A lot of, I was just looking at um. Is it pewtrust.org? They do a lot of surveys on housing. Through mainstreet.org. They're also talking about how to do this well. In a small rural town environment. It's been done before. Other communities are looking at it.
It would be a special use permit. So that they would get rid of by rights, especially so that would take some ability figuring out. Yeah, if there were, look at that, with especially, I guess we keep the the numbers the same, I would think, and then houses.
I think the number of houses would go up.
But we can't go and build more than fifty though, because our ordinance, but we can go. Eight four, that'd be fine.
You can't, you you can always amend the ordinance depending on what's said with town council.
Right.
But you have to go through the process, make sure you you all say.
And that's why this would have to be, I think, a partnership between us, the developer. Um I wanted to, the developer to be here to make sure that. Everybody heard that they are willing to have a conversation because they've heard over and over again, they're not willing to talk to us. Right? Um I know higher density and other things have been an issue in the past, but the past is the past. I think it's time to move on. I am not sold one way or the other, I will tell you, but I think we should explore the opportunity. Because it could be good for our community.
One of the things I mean that obviously can be looking at what Matt has put there and it goes back to. Understanding. Both where the town is and where we fit in terms of future development. In the early stages of the Van Cleve Nature Project. We didn't have town access from downtown and it took. A lawsuits and it took a grant. And it took trading and land and giving land and a whole lot of things to open up. When that happened. We now have a park that's the center of the town. And because the park is the center of the town. When you look at the map, and I don't have it right here, but if you look at the map. You'll you see that the Van Cleve Nature Area is in the center of the town. And as we get into this eastern part of the town. It's clear that it's in the town's best interest to expand the park. And as we expand the park, there are going to be trade offs. Developers not kind of just say, here's ten acres or five acres. They're going to say, we want X amount of more houses to do that. But it does behoove us to think. What are the pieces of land we would be interested in if that were to happen? Where would we get the most connectivity in terms of? Usage to open up the town in terms of walkability and where would it do the most? To connect into the scan land or to connect into what's already there. So. Some of it, I think, what the developer has said in the past, I I I've actually never heard that they weren't willing.
Yeah.
That's that's misinformation with that, but we hear it, not from you, but it's it's said from other people. There's always been interest from the developer to talk to us. But at the same time. There's been a reluctance to deal with the density issue as a town. When I say reluctance, meaning to to. To aim up. So and and the only way it's going to be interested to them is if we do add more. So. The perspective of figuring out what is the right balance is the trick, you know, how do we balance that? But I I really appreciate that you that we brought it to the table again because. The future land development of the town is up there. We already settled some of this.
Right.
Not all of it. There's a big building we have to.
And there aren't very many opportunities left to have these discussions, right? So we either have them now or we never have.
That's right.
And I would at least like to explore them now. And potentially. I don't know, potentially get somewhere for the community.
What we we did find, I mean, the one thing that was consistent even recently in any conversation. The state of Virginia is underbuilt. The county is underbuilt, the town is underbuilt. I mean. We've learned in any way you look at it, whether you talk of houses or apartments, there's a need. So the need is there. Now, what that means in terms of. Low income, high income, small houses, big houses is all debatable, but I do think one of the things that was clear. Is that the need is there. Now you can debate as to how, to what level Scottsville should meet that need or not. But it's been, I mean, it's from the government, the governor's office all the way down to. Anything we heard when we had people in hearings here, everybody said the same thing.
Well, and if you look at the research from small communities like ours across the country, it seems that these same sentiments are getting echoed. About a lack of ability, you know, affordability in housing, the lack of housing, whether it's apartments or whether it's. Same, you know, regular homes. Um people are struggling with this right now. And we have a lot of people who are older who want to downsize and they're going to be, there's going to be nothing in this community for them. This is an opportunity for us to have something for them. It's also an opportunity potentially for revenue in the future. It's more people for our businesses, more. All the arguments that were on the table before, but this is, I think, a better location. For this development.
Well, one of the things I might say that might be helpful for the council to think about would be. What we saw happen, which. In the end was, you know, a big controversy on some boats. It was, of course, it was a plan of action that was set in motion about five years ago, and it was simply followed through to its natural conclusion. Some of what I think you're asking is, as we've look at the strategic plan, as we look at the comprehensive plan, what does this council want to do?
Right.
That's really the question is what does this? So what happened before was set in motion by a council. I mean, I was a part of it. And by the time it got to be where. Act actual action took place. It was a very different council who had different ideas, but at the moment. This council needs to act on these same things, whatever this council wants to do. I think that's what you're saying.
That is exactly what I'm saying. Thank you, Dan. Um. If you all are amenable, I'm happy. To work on several versions of what those possibilities might be, bring back. Pros and cons for those for your consideration.
Would you do that before you talk to the developer? Like, I'll make you work a little shorter than.
If it's whatever you want. Right? I think it's helpful to have the developer at the table, if the developer is willing to come to the table. To bring in several scenarios so that we're not just, but if the council wants to just work within the community and come up with something. Willing to do that too. We heard from Charlie that they've been kind of hesitant because they don't know what the town wants. If we don't do anything to tell them what we want, we're going to get exactly by right. And there will be no opportunities once those permits are filed and they get further down in their build process.
You're talking about hesitancy. What what's what's another challenge?
Well, I don't think it, and Charlie, you correct me if I'm wrong here. I don't think the developer wants to take the lead on this. I think the developer wants to hear from us what we want and then react to that. Is that correct? Or how would you characterize it, Charlie?
Well, then you might want to lead a path, thinking sort of market that is supposed to hear what the town and townspeople. Want, you know, you know, in a comprehensive way, you know, I know y'all are working on that right now. Um and then be able to try to do that or something as opposed to that if we are.
You you know something, just so I follow up on what I'm Charlie, just for a minute, and maybe it's helpful for the council to hear this. From. Two thousand ten until at least. Twenty twenty or twenty twenty one. There was not an active player on the other side. I mean, in other words, there was not active, at least by my way of saying it. There was not action possible in terms of. What could happen in the factory, the land or over here. There is now. There is the possibility of action. And so we're we're looking at something that's very different than it was in the past. In the past, it. At least as much as we as a town, we're desperate to have action to take place in areas. It wasn't happening. Now it's possible. It's there's an interested developer who has the rights to various pieces of land. Whether they own it at this particular moment or not. So simply stating. This is really possible if we wanted to do something. It was not in the past. Not that it couldn't have happened in the future, but it's. The the paradigm is very different. And because we have, as you said, Council Morris, there's a there's a developer sitting in the room with us as we're. Talking about this and when we look at these things, mind you. It wasn't that the developer's been waiting. The developer, they proposed things that were. Rejected, so to speak. So. I think they're wise to say, well, what does the new council want to do? What is that we're doing? The new council might not want to do anything, but what does the new council want to do?
Those two things that I'd like to see done that been on the dock for many years is have apartment buildings. Or some apartments and have assisted living. And if those things can be put in there. Then I would be all for that. If it's if it's not, I'm buying a single house, you know, those those are the things that the community's wanted for years. We don't have enough apartments here and we don't have assisted living. So or a medical facility, but I don't know if that could go there. I think the medical facility should go over there by the. Sorry, sir.
Are there any legal? Are there any legal stipulations that say I can't work with the developer on proposals, Mr. Bowling? So I can bring scenarios to the council for their consideration, right? And again, I'm not for or against.
Were your council members present? That's a meeting and follow the rules for meeting and so forth.
Okay. Alright, so if you are all open to that, then I don't mind spearheading it with the developer for this and I can pursue with um. With Mr. Sutton on the Tiger Fuel side to see if there's in any interest on his. Part in doing anything with the remainder of the property of at the Tiger Market. Yes? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, the last two items under new topics are pretty much just uh. Something we can tend to next week as far as appointing these people, but we do have their resume information and. Uh, I don't know off of planning commission, how many questions Mr. Risco can answer and I'll say for.
Bill had a question. This is speaking on, we had a private session, but we had two applicants. Um, and the. We went into private sessions, Javier, correct me if I'm saying this incorrectly, we went into private session, correct? Acknowledging the two candidates, correct?
Yes.
So.
It was a closed session that came out discussed.
So we we went in and we, but we acknowledged the two people we were gonna talk about, correct?
Yes.
So we acknowledged Mr. Meeks and we acknowledged Liz Not, so we we acknowledged the, went into private session. Yeah, after private session, we recommended Liz Not, Liz. Served on the council for four years. As a counselor, she served as two additional years as a vice mayor in the past, happened to serve with her, she's. I think most of people probably know Liz, but very active in the community and. On a personal level, I've been hoping Liz would get back in local government for a long time, so. At any rate, the planning commission recommended Liz.
Oh, I just wanna make a point about that, we got the one guy got short shipped the last time he was on and he replied and then he was taken away because. The the council decided to change his mind, so I think that should be a consideration. And and I know him a little bit. And I and I know his reputation too, but he's probably done more for this community than all of us combined and I don't know if they know much about it, but he's. He saved a lot of old Scottsville. A lot of the houses, he has rentals, he has some, he has some Airbnbs, uh, he's really talented. I actually think he'd probably be be good on ARB because he uh, he knows materials and and things like that. So I, you know, I I think we need to make sure that it's it's just not a rubber stamp for the one that was interviewed. But we can talk about that next, it looks like this, the the ARB, there's. There's only two candidates and there's two people, so that'll be a done deal. So that should be pretty easy with that. Oh, we need to look at those two. Well, that should be brought forth.
If the ARB met the applicants, read the applications, discussed the applications and said, these are the two we want. I mean, it's. That's who. And planning commission met with the applicants, reviewed the, you know. Applications and everything and said, this is who we want, I mean. We're not at the meetings, we didn't interview them, we didn't do all that.
Injector, yes, but. We made a decision on those two, like both candidates, one of them has. Isn't our, has a background in historical. Uh, preservation, something like that. And the other uh, that went forward, it's new to town, but wants to get involved and was. Pretty well qualified and seemed like they're making a good addition. Um, what I'm. I'm excited to interview is that now that we have a second architect. I'm assuming, and I haven't talked to her, I tell you about this, I don't wanna speak for him, but I'm assuming. He's gonna probably withdraw, leaving another spot. Reach out, this is a down room, and I don't know if it's gonna be true or not, just a guess on my part, because I haven't talked to him, but. I'm assuming you wanna reach out to the applicants again. If they were seriously interested, they would be. Part of the interview process is one of the people who've withdrawn or. So she's involved with the uh, interview process and now she's leaving too, so she's already weighed in on that, right? Is that right? I thought one of them that was involved, one was one opening and they interviewed and now it's two. Do they also interview two things or one?
We interviewed for technically one, but.
I would say I concurrently, Meredith, I think it undermines the authority, the autonomy. And the relationship between this body and a another working body unless there is a severe reason. That um, that would give us pause, some ethical complaint or concern or something. Grievous like that. I would be loath to overturn that. It's been a longstanding premise of mine in in interacting with groups. To not do that because it really will destroy the, a good working relationship. With a sister body and I think we need that, so that's just my humble two cents.
Okay, well, we will put on the agenda for next week to appoint these people to their respective positions. You'll be welcome to vote any way you want to.
We're gonna use this application, and we're gonna, we need to look at this.
Which application then?
Maybe for the future, but not now.
Oh, yeah, you mean just in general, the application for any position as a volunteer.
I think that's what, I think that's what we said.
Everybody's business staple here is an elected official who didn't have.
I've never thought on application.
Yeah.
It's kind of.
I agree, Eddie.
I think we need to vote and see if we wanna do that, because that's kind of another bureaucratic level you gotta, you gotta have. For, you know, for every personal contractor, you gotta go through this whole process now.
Yeah, and it might disincentivize people.
It's like the Congress, you gotta.
One of the things I will say though is, I mean, in fairness is that. When you're looking at two or three. Sometimes you don't have two or three, but if you have a couple, you you wanna be able to look at people's backgrounds at to some level and have a way to. Understand this applicant versus that. If you don't have that. Difficult.
This guy has a bachelor's in architectural history from UVA. For the archituri people, you know, I like some of it isn't relevant.
Well, you could say less relevant.
Yeah.
Information to this position, right?
You also just noted.
I I think it goes back both, there's a, I mean, your point, Mr. Rain is well taken, at the same time. We don't wanna be owner as, we do need to know some basic information.
Okay.
And we trust them that they're doing.
Great, anything else?
Yeah, uh, can we get minutes um, for last year, you know, I just feel like that we're way behind on that and. Um, I'd just like to see the work session, it's in the town, I mean, the town council minutes.
To try to play some catch up on it.
Yeah, and let's try to get them ahead of time, way ahead of time.
I, I think that really affects the workload for uh, clerks.
Yeah. What, let me ask you this, just to follow up and on, in due second, defense of Counselor Heisen.
Well, let me just say about, before that, if if this is a real problem, we got some people here who could do minutes. You know, I do minutes and starts with that minute, I guess Eileen does minutes, so maybe we could share the workload a little bit and just. Uh, help out a little bit.
Okay, well, we're gonna do some changes. I have been researching some of the things that we have done in the past. Um, the minutes that you guys have here, I mean, I know you guys wanna see detailed.
No, I don't.
Okay, but what we're gonna do, I'm giving you guys each a folder. Um, for the next meeting, in that folder is a notebook, a pen, take down your notes. What, as far as the state, I've been researching, I've been researching Robert's rules. Basically, they wanna know who, what, when and how, and that's all it needs to go in the minute because we have everything on video.
It's not a transcript, right? It's just minutes.
Come on, Jim, get me out of here, go to Virginia, seventy days, five days, it's supposed to be submitted.
No, I don't think there is. Only at the state level, at state level.
So one of the things that I am doing, I, as you see, I have a laptop in front of me, if you guys have been talking, I have been taking notes. So what, it it, this is gonna make it easier for us to take this, put it on our letterhead, give it to you guys. There's, there's just, it 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 just makes it easier instead of sending your handwriting everything out. And then trying to find the time to get it onto the letterhead and it's just, it's, it's a lot of. We don't have a lot of downtime, you know, in between.
But if you have a template for yourself and just fill it out with the topics and put a few notes in, you're done.
My experience has been what happens with bodies. Um, there come, the issues come before you and then all of a sudden. Ask, which really is the ban, that 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 more detail we put into the minutes, and more detail we put into minutes, and more detail we put into minutes. Until you really end up with a transcript, one document, it becomes a burden on the clerk. Or backups, court reporters, that's that's literally what the county wanted to do, because they wanted to have. Purveyance like minutes, and so you, essentially, they they farm them out and they tape you.
But isn't, I mean, i- isn't that the reason why these are taped? I mean, you can always go back to the video and say.
I'm just trying to explain what happened.
Yeah, I would think.
I wanted to say, I wanna say, thank you, Counselor Heisen for bringing it up. Thank you, new clerk, for your follow up. I, but keep in mind, I think Counselor Heisen was also volunteering, if need be, it sounds like there might be ability to help if. If that's, if that helps, because I do think whatever our new way going forward. I- in the, in the model of Counselor Morris, she likes procedure. And whatever the procedure is, it would be good to get to. We can understand gaps in the past and there will be times where it is, but whatever the procedure is. Let's come up with the simplest way for it to succeed and. You did hear there's some volunteers too. I wasn't one of them, I can't read my notes, you can't read my notes, so.
Anything else?
So that's what, I'm gonna go back and look at, he's, he's got everything on the website. So that's what we were trying to figure out when he. Got stuck, and then I'll go back and, you know, just watch and. Do what I did here.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright. See y'all next week.
I thought that thing swinging over there.
Uh, there was challenge. Really got there.
Seven thirty this morning, I haven't made it home yet. I said I've been out of the house, it's seven, seven thirty this morning, I haven't made it home yet.
Well, then even though I did that, I saw it, it changes.